Judge, we're ready whenever you are.
Okay.
Sir?
Caesar, we're ready.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Today is Monday, August 24, 2020. Commissioners Court is meeting in a public hearing. Would you please rise and join us for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, eternal, just as for all.
This afternoon, we're joined by Dario Garcia, our ASL interpreter. I'd like to open with item number three, public comment. And this is public comment unrelated to the public hearing. We do not have any public comment registered at this moment, Judge, so we'll take no action.
Thank you.
Item number four, public hearing. Receive public comment, both proponents and opponents, on the proposed 2020 property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District. I'd like to ask for a motion to open the public hearing, please.
Second?
Commissioner Betis is absent.
Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. And Judge, if you'll just open the public hearing on the tax rate for the County Hospital District.
Before we start, just thank you all for being here today. Appreciate your time and to be here with us. The El Paso County Commissioners, on behalf of the El Paso County Hospital District, may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the El Paso County Hospital District on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval rate tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Michael Nunez, would you do the overview, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Nunez, Chief Financial Officer for the El Paso County Hospital District. What we have presented here is a summarized presentation of the detailed budget that we did have in the joint session between the UMC Board of Managers and the Commissioners Court, which was held on Tuesday, August 4. Today, we are here Monday, August 24, to present the public hearing on the tax rate. Later on today, as a result of the truth and taxation changes, the Court can elect to actually vote on the proposed tax rate today as well, of which we do have an agenda item. If the vote is not taken today, it must be held within seven days of today's hearing. Next slide. In summary, for the El Paso County Hospital District, our proposed fiscal year 2021 revenue budget is approximately $941 million. And there are about five or six revenue sources in net patient service revenue, $438 million; premium revenue, $217 million; Medicaid supplemental revenue, $104 million; property tax revenue of $125 million; and other revenues of $58 million. Next slide. The hospital district's fiscal 2021 expense budget is about $933 million, which is made up of the various components. And the largest items are salaries and wages at $313 million; medical claims with El Paso Health, $184 million; supplies and pharmaceuticals, $151 million; physician fees, $115 million; and purchase services, $84,000. Next slide. The overall hospital district routine capital budget is made up of UMC El Paso, of $151,182,384; El Paso Health, $1559,362; and El Paso Children's, $2,738,292, for a total of $194,480,382. Next slide. The tax rate that the hospital district is proposing, if you look at this from left to right in this table, currently, the tax rate is 0.267747, which is at last year's presentation, we estimated this would bring in about $119.7 million. This year, with a property values increase of approximately 4.4%, now up to $46.7 billion, under the no-new revenue rate that was calculated now at 0.265305, and what the hospital district is proposing as part of its budget is to stay at last year's tax rate of 0.267747. Staying with last year's tax rate would generate property tax revenue of approximately $125 million. The overall increase between the proposed tax rate versus the no-new revenue rate is an annual increase of $1.1 million in total. And when you look at the average home value this year of $135,290, the total tax is now $362.23, which is an overall increase of $4.55 from last year, which has broken up into two components, a dollar twenty-five from the increase in values, and then the difference between the no-new revenue rate and the proposed rate of $3.30. So with that, we'll open up to any questions from the Court.
Commissioners, questions? We'd like to, at this point, we'd like to invite anybody from the public or online.
Judge, we have not had any members of the public sign up. I'll defer to Mr. Mendez to see if there's anybody online.
This is Miguel Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me? The highlighted version. There you go. Sorry. The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the El Paso County Hospital District on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval rate tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges. I'm Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me? The highlighted version. There you go. Sorry. The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the El Paso County Hospital District on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval rate tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Michael Nunez, would you do the overview, please?
Good afternoon, Commissioners. My name is Michael Nunez, Chief Financial Officer for the El Paso County Hospital District. What we have presented here is a summarized presentation of the detailed budget that we did have in the joint session between the UMC Board of Managers and the Commissioners Court, which was held on Tuesday, August 4. Today, we are here Monday, August 24, to present the public hearing on the tax rate. Later on today, as a result of the truth and taxation changes, the Court can elect to actually vote on the proposed tax rate today as well, of which we do have an agenda item. If the vote is not taken today, it must be held within seven days of today's hearing. Next slide. In summary, for the El Paso County Hospital District, our proposed fiscal year 2021 revenue budget is approximately $941 million. And there are about five or six revenue sources in net patient service revenue, $438 million; premium revenue, $217 million; Medicaid supplemental revenue, $104 million; property tax revenue of $125 million; and other revenues of $58 million. Next slide. The hospital district's fiscal 2021 expense budget is about $933 million, which is made up of the various components. And the largest items are salaries and wages at $313 million; medical claims with El Paso Health, $184 million; supplies and pharmaceuticals, $151 million; physician fees, $115 million; and purchase services, $84,000. Next slide. The overall hospital district routine capital budget is made up of UMC El Paso, of $151,182,384; El Paso Health, $1559,362; and El Paso Children's, $2,738,292, for a total of $194,480,382. Next slide. The overall hospital district routine capital budget is made up of UMC El Paso, of $151,182,384; El Paso Health, $1559,362; and El Paso Children's, $2,738,292, for a total of $194,480,382. Next slide. The overall hospital district routine capital budget is made up of UMC El Paso, of $151,182,384; El Paso Health, $1559,362; and El Paso Children's, $2,738,292, for a total of $4.55 from last year, which has broken up into two components, a dollar twenty-five from the increase in values, and then the difference between the no-new revenue rate and the proposed rate of $3.30. So with that, we'll open up to any questions from the Court.
Commissioners, questions? We'd like to, at this point, we'd like to invite anybody from the public or online. Caesar?
Judge, we have not had any members of the public sign up. I'll defer to Mr. Mendez to see if there's anybody online.
This is Miguel Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me?
The highlighted version. There you go.
The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the El Paso County Hospital District on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval rate tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges. I'm Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me?
The highlighted version. There you go.
The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the El Paso County Hospital District on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval rate tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges. I'm Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me?
The highlighted version. There you go.
The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the County of El Paso on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges. I'm Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
Could we, if that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District... Oh, sorry. Pardon me?
The highlighted version. There you go.
The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the County of El Paso on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges. I'm Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal. The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no-new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the County of El Paso on August 17, 2020, exceed the lower of the no-new revenue rate or voter approval tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks. Good evening, thank you, Judge. Good evening, Judges and Commissioners. Right now, I'll provide you with a brief tax rate overview. As noted, this tax rate was proposed by the Commissioners Court on August 17, and during our...
Today, we are here, Monday, August 24, to present the public hearing on the tax rate. Later on today, as a result of the truth and taxation changes, the court can elect to actually vote on the proposed tax rate today as well, of which we do have an agenda item. If the vote is not taken today, it must be held within seven days of today's hearing. Next slide. In summary, for the El Paso County Hospital District, our proposed fiscal year 2021 revenue budget is approximately $941 million. And there are about five or six revenue sources in net patient service revenue, $438 million; premium revenue, $217 million; Medicaid supplemental revenue, $104 million; property tax revenue of $125 million, and other revenues of $58 million. Next slide. The hospital district's fiscal 2021 expense budget is about $933 million, which is made up of the various components. And the largest items are salaries and wages at $313 million; medical claims with El Paso Health, $184 million; supplies and pharmaceuticals, $151 million; physician fees, $115 million; and purchase services, $84. Next slide. The overall hospital district routine capital budget is made up of UMC El Paso of $15,182,384; El Paso Health, $1,559,362; and El Paso Children's, $2,738,292, for a total of $19,488,38. Next slide. The tax rate that the hospital district is proposing, if you look at this from left to right in this table, currently, the tax rate is 0.267747, which is, at last year's presentation, we estimated this would bring in about $119.7 million. This year, with a property values increase of approximately 4.4%, now up to $46.7 billion, under the no new revenue rate that was calculated now at 0.265305. And what the hospital district is proposing as part of its budget is to stay at last year's tax rate of 0.267747. Staying with last year's tax rate would generate property tax revenue of approximately $125 million. The overall increase between the proposed tax rate versus the no new revenue rate is an annual increase of $1.1 million in total. And when you look at the average home value this year of $135,290, the total tax is now $362.23, which is an overall increase of $4.55 from last year, which is broken up into two components, $1.25 from the increase in values, and then the difference between the no new revenue rate and the proposed rate of $3.30. So with that, we'll open it up to any questions from the court.
Commissioners, questions? At this point, we'd like to invite anybody from the public or online, Caesar?
Judge, we have not had any members of the public sign up. I'll defer to Mr. Mendez to see if there's anybody online.
This is Mr. Mendez with IT. We have not received any requests through our online portal.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District for 2020. And the public hearing is now closed.
If that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second to close a public hearing? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Item number five from public hearing. Receive public comment, both proponents and opponents, on the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2021 for the county of El Paso. I'd like to ask the court for a motion to open the public hearing for the county. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. You'll just read the opening public hearing comment, Judge?
Yes. For the El Paso County Hospital District?
No.
Oh, sorry.
The other one.
Pardon me?
The highlighted version. There you go.
The county may not adopt a tax rate that exceeds the lower of the voter approval rate or the no new revenue rate calculated as provided by the Texas Property Tax Code 26.04, until it has held a public hearing on the proposed tax increase. The tax rate proposed for the county of El Paso on August 17, 2020, exceeded the lower of the no new revenue rate or voter approval tax rates. All persons, both proponents and opponents of the tax increase, will be afforded adequate opportunity to present their views. Wally, your overview, thanks.
Good evening. Thank you, Judge. Good evening, judges and commissioners. Right now, I'll provide you with a brief tax rate overview. As noted, this tax rate was proposed by the Commissioners Court on August 17. And during our budget discussions, the week of August 11 through the 14th, we also reviewed the recommended tax rate that you're considering this evening. Next slide, please. So the no new revenue rate for the county of El Paso, that is the 2020 calculation that we used for fiscal year 2021, was a rate of .483827. Our maximum rate before this had to be referred to voters, known as the voter approval rate, as calculated, was .489493. The rate that the court proposed on August 17 that has been used in your budget process this year was the current tax rate of .488997, which is the same tax rate we had for tax year 19 that balanced and was used for the fiscal year 2020 budget. As a matter of information, each 1% change in the tax rate generates about $2.17 million, and every penny on the current tax rate generates about $4.48 million. Next slide, please. For comparative purposes, these are the current either adopted or proposed tax rates from a representative school district and all of the tax entities within that school district. As you can see on the top-left portion of this pie graph, EPASD represents about 42% of the tax rate at their adopted $1.31, followed by the city of El Paso, who adopted the same tax rate for fiscal year 2021, as it had in 2020, of just over 90.7 cents, or 29% of the average tax bill. That's followed by the county of El Paso, also proposing the same tax rate of .488997, which represents about 16% of the average homeowner tax bill. University Medical Center, that you just heard on their public hearing, also is proposing the same tax rate as last year, .267747, makes up about 9% of the average taxpayer bill. And lastly, El Paso Community College has yet to adopt their tax rate, but they have proposed the tax rate of .139859, about 4% of the average tax bill. Next slide, please. This is just a 10-year representation of the last tax rates for the county of El Paso. As you can see on the far right, the county is proposing the same tax rate as we had in fiscal year 2020. And of that rate, about 8% of our average tax bill goes towards the INS portion, or 3.8 cents out of the 48.8 cents tax rate. So this is proposed to keep the tax rate the same for fiscal year 21. Next slide, please. On the far-left column is the no new revenue tax rate as calculated. The proposed tax rate, which is in the center, the county's current tax rate of .488997, would have a total levy of about $201.8 million, or $2.3 million higher than the no new revenue tax rate. Average property value on El Paso County home was about $1,000 higher than last year at $131,438. That would represent about $6.80 more in annual property taxes, or 57 cents a month. The maximum tax rate, you can see, considered on the far-right-hand side, which is the voter approval tax rate, generates about an additional $200,000 above the proposed tax rate for fiscal year 2021. Next slide. Judge, that concludes the presentation. So I would open it up for questions from the court, and then would turn it over to you for any public comments.
Any comments, questions? If not, it's now open to the public again, Caesar?
Once again, Judge, I do not have any members that have signed up. Mr. Mendez, do we have anybody online?
We have not received any requests through our online portal.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear that.
We have not received any requests through our online portal.
The Commissioners Court, on its next item on tonight's agenda, will consider the adoption of property tax rate for the county of El Paso for 2020 to be collected during fiscal year 2021. The public hearing is now closed.
If that's your motion, Judge, could we please have a second? Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you, Wally.
Item number six from the regular agenda. Discuss and take appropriate action to adopt the 2020 property tax rate for the El Paso County Hospital District.
Good evening, Judge. Commissioners Omar Villa, Assistant County Attorney, Chief Legal Officer, University Medical Center. The language I'm reading will be for the motion for the adoption of the property tax rate for the hospital district. For the El Paso County Hospital District, I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $0.267747 per $100 assessed value for the 2020 tax year that consists of a property tax rate of $0.216875 per $100 assessed value for the purpose of maintenance and operations, and a property tax rate of $0.050872 per $100 assessed value for the payment of principal and interest of the hospital district, which is effectively a 0.9% increase in the tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 1.7% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $3.62. Further, the tax assessor-collector is authorized to assess and collect these taxes for the El Paso County Hospital District, doing business as University Medical Center of El Paso, on October 1, 2020.
Need to move on that?
That is the motion language, Judge. Is that your motion, Judge?
Yes, so moved.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. That is four affirmative votes, no negative votes, no no votes. Item number seven. Discuss and take appropriate action regarding the fiscal year 2021 operating and capital budget for the El Paso County Hospital District, doing business as University Medical Center of El Paso.
Well, good afternoon. Michael Nunez, Chief Financial Officer. This agenda item is now to approve the fiscal 2021 operating and capital budget for the El Paso County Hospital District. This item was discussed during a joint budget work session between the Commissioners Court and the UMC Board of Managers, of which we are now bringing this to the court for your approval.
Approve.
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Aye.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. That's four yes votes and no no votes. Item number eight. Pursuant to the Property Tax Code Section 26.05A, adopt a tax rate for the El Paso County.
I move that the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of $0.488997 per $100 assessed value for the 2020 tax year that consists of a property tax rate of $0.450290 per $100 assessed value for the purpose of maintenance and operations, and a property tax rate of $0.038707 per $100 assessed value for the payment of principal and interest of the county, which is effectively a 1.069% increase in the tax rate. This tax rate will raise more taxes for maintenance and operations than last year's tax rate. The tax rate will effectively be raised by 1.16% and will raise taxes for maintenance and operations on a $100,000 home by approximately $5.17. Wally?
That's it, Judge. That's the motion.
Motion to approve?
Commissioner Perez is absent. Commissioner Leon?
Aye.
Commissioner Stout?
Before I vote, I have a question. So we're still not done with figuring out what we're doing with budget. Should we actually be voting on the tax rate right now?
If I may, Commissioner Wally Hargrove from the Office of Budget and Fiscal Policy. Because you proposed your tax rate on the 17th, by statute, under Senate Bill 2, you're now required to take action to adopt that tax rate within seven days.
Okay.
We still have a public hearing on the budget on September 14. That will conclude the budget, sir.
So I think we need to work on the budget a little bit and possibly, you know, I'd like to continue to ask that we reach out to the Sheriff's Association. I understand that the court wasn't willing to reach out to them to talk to them about funding the CIT program through a reduction or by not taking the salary increases that we are not giving to the rest of the folks in the county who do not fall under the collective bargaining agreement. But, you know, I want to ask the court and propose that we ask them to forego that increase, just like everybody else is foregoing that increase, so that we can give our taxpayers a little bit of a break. You know, I know that it's not a lot of money that we're asking our taxpayers to pay. However, you know, these are very trying times and difficult times. There's, you know, unprecedented times when it comes to our economy. And, you know, I think we should ask that the Sheriff's Association look at doing that for the folks of the county of El Paso. You know, I understand that there was not a willingness to do so for CIT. Hopefully, we can talk about how to fund that in future years. It's a program that I support greatly, and I think that we should definitely do our best to try to fund it. I don't know where else we would find the funding within our budget. But, you know, I think we need to continue to look at that. But at this point in time, if, you know, if we're not, if all of the employees in this county who are not under the CBA are not going to be receiving increases this year, I think it's only fair to ask. And we're doing this in the name of austerity. We're doing this in the name of holding the line. We're doing this in the name of trying not to hit our taxpayers even harder this year. And I would hope that the Sheriff's Association would also fall in line and say, you know what, we're going to be team players. We're going to do this. And so if the motion is to vote for what would be considered the current tax rate at .488997, I'm going to have to vote no, because I would like to, I think it would be a good idea for us to try to work with the Sheriff's Association and see if we can get down to the no new revenue rate. I think that the difference in the amount of money that we are going to be generating between the no new revenue rate and the current rate is about the same amount that we're giving them in raises this year, about $2.3 million. And that's what that tax increase is going to be for, is basically for the Sheriff's Association to have that increase when nobody else in the county is going to get it. And so I'm voting no on this, on the rate of .488997.
Commissioner Robinson?
Aye.
Judge Samaniego?
Aye.
Motion carries. That's three votes yes and one vote no. Thank you. And with that, Judge, that concludes today's meeting.
Okay, well, thank you. Before we close out, just, we have two gentlemen here, Dr. Joel Hendricks and John Law, from our task force, our Public Health Task Force. And I really want to thank you for the amount of time. I know Betsy also here with our task force. But I want to thank you both because of how important it's been to have someone looking at public health, helping us with decisions and some of the orders that we have to look at. And so it was something that was extremely needed. I feel a lot more comfortable knowing that there's so many caliber, high caliber individuals that are helping us with the public health and trying to address COVID at this point in time. So we thank you, Joel and John, thank you very much for what you do. Thank you. And this concludes, and thank you very much, and thank you for your time.
Be safe.
This concludes today's meeting at 6:06 PM.